I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Wilson, Phillips.
Here.
Weaver here, Sofa absent. Schneider.
Here.
Dunson here. Carter here. Henley.
Here.
Here. Farquhar absent. I make a move to, or motion to excuse the absences of Farquhar, Sofa.
Support.
Motion to support to excuse the absences, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? No security. Do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt as presented.
Motion and support to adopt the agenda as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No security.
Who was reported?
Larry. Everybody read the minutes from August 30th, 2016. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Very well done, L C T.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we have a lot going on there.
There being no additions or corrections, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, support.
Motion and support to approve the minutes from August 30th, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve? Or, excuse me, demine. No security. There being no citizens in the gallery, I think we have no comments from the city? Communications? Other than the mobile light thing, does anybody have any other communications for the community? No communications? Unfinished business? We still wait for Jamie to give us our bunch list, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Still unfinished.
Need to get that done someday.
By the year. For sure.
Sub-type next year?
Yeah.
How about, how about early first quarter? I don't miss me, you just kind of mentioned that to him, we're still waiting for that?
Oh yeah, he knows. I talked about it two weeks ago.
I think he talked to the girls and he said, why is there any water? I just found it finished.
That's his idea. After you have a good idea, it's been dragging for a year now.
I will get it.
Any other unfinished business that we need to discuss? Well, this is with the new business. Representative isn't here yet. However, if anybody had any questions they'd like to discuss about it regarding this application for mobile light, mobile, mobility?
Mobility.
Mobility, okay.
So what exactly is this process then? If it's right-of-way area? We, we just have to skip, the city has to give permission to be right-of-way? I don't, I, that's what I can understand because it's not like a zoning law or a thing, is it?
Yeah. Apparently, they, they sent a letter out.
Yeah.
To you.
You got it.
Yeah. And, and then we responded. I think, uh, you responded to whatever.
Yeah.
But this area, I don't know if we're undiscovered, I'll read it on this form. But this area, they wanted to put it in, and I talked to Bud about it a week ago. And he looked at the map, and then he made, this is the map here. And he made a copy of that map. And where it wants to, you've got three cities in this parking lot. And it'll go, and basically, out in front of that. And, but where it, the right-of-way where it goes, there's an eight-inch main water main there. There's also a gas line. And there's also catch basins with the drainage of the water that also goes through there. So it's actually 100% impractical.
Not in place to put that?
Yeah, even if we wanted to put something there, that wouldn't be my location.
To put it.
Yeah.
Well, how did they pick that spot?
I, I think they just probably looked at a Google map and, and, you know, I guess we're quite a bit ways above Seaman.
Tiger.
Suggesting.
Yeah, and I think they just picked that and they said, it's a right-of-way.
Yeah.
And so, it's not, it's not on private property, it's public property. And they said, well, we could set one down in there. And it's, it, I saw the schematic of how it looks, but I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Anyway, the, it's a, apparently a hundred feet tall.
Hundred twenty feet.
Hundred twenty feet tall. And then to support that, because there'd be no guide wires, it'd have to go down in the ground.
That's right, just look and see how deep it was going.
Yeah, and so it's, it would go down significantly, so, and it would interfere with what you got. Whatever.
Well, ever, one thing, that's hypothetically, or resisting.
Hello?
She, she followed up. How was Marysville? No.
No, I, I didn't, I wasn't lying, but it was a whiteout the whole way.
You said it.
Yes. I apologize for the delay. I understand why it would be late today.
Well, a lot of us are slowing down coming home today.
I got one for it. And it's going, yeah, 4:30.
It was at like 4:30 when I started here, it was fine all day.
Yeah, the roads didn't get bad until I was coming up 53. And coming across 32, it was completely a whiteout. Half the time, I didn't see the road, and I was just praying I was still alive. I might stay here overnight, though.
My name is Bart Phillips, I'm the chairman of the planning commission, I think you've talked with Eric, our mayor, already. Um, we've, uh-
I'm Ellen Tenser.
Okay. We've actually started the meeting a little while ago, and gone through preliminary stuff that we have on tap, and have gotten to the point to where we discuss your project on, in depth more. And we just started that just a couple minutes ago. If you want to do, go ahead and get out your presentation, if you have something to present.
Okay.
You can go ahead and do that now.
Eric, did you give them a copy of that handout?
Yes.
I don't think I've-
We've got all that.
Show you on the computer. Basically, what we are is a data transport company. Because, as you're all aware, it's not just young people anymore, but people our age that, you know, the only way to keep in touch with the grandkids is data, because they will not return phone calls. So you, you have to use a lot more data. And, you know, the Pokemon Go, Facebook, you know, your cellphone, you know, now you can access vending machines and pay for it with your cellphone. You know, everything is data today. And it's all data-driven, and it's getting more and more. So that's why we need additional data transport. And so what we're doing is trying to build out a system all over the country. And just to increase the data. Because you, you just can't do it with the cell towers that are out there today. There's just far too much of it. Like, I use my, my map system on my phone to get here. Thank goodness for that, because otherwise I would have known where the roads were to turn. So you're constantly using data. And that's what we're trying to do, is build out a data transport system so we can increase the data. And what will, this will do is increase the data for your community. So if people are trying to use their iPad, their iPhone, their, their computer, or any other data device, they'll be able to use it a little bit easier. They'll have a little more transport. Now, I don't know how your community is, but I have been in some communities where I go to download my emails and review them, because I'm on the road a lot. And sometimes I can get the subject, but that's it. Nothing else will download, because they just don't have enough data transport in their jurisdiction. So that's what we're trying to improve, is all the data transport for you. This isn't something that's, you know, oh, well, you know, you just need a little more. No, as, as the years go on, you're gonna need more and more and more. I'm sure you've all seen the kids today.
Is this more of a repeat or tower, right?
Uh, it, it's a transport, so it can pick up from your cellphone, your computer. And it then has a microwave dish that will send it back to another one and another. And it gets back to the main transfer station. Okay.
Is this for phones as well as Wi-Fi for computers?
Yes, yes. It's for all of it. And basically, in the old days, you, in the old days, you know, 10 years ago, you used, you know, a fiber for cable, and you had to keep burying it, and you dig up, and you're always digging up the roads. This way, we're saying, don't dig up the roads. Don't constantly be burying and, you know, and worrying about cutting it, because you just put a new sewer line in and you damaged it. This is all through the air. So we're just sending it through the air instead of the fiber and the cable.
For pipelines, isn't it?
Basically, it's a pipeline in the air, correct?
The other thing, now, I know, like, if you have a Verizon or Sprint or so on, they, they have their own towers. Now, are, is that capable of any phone, any, any company phones, or?
Anyone who contracts with us, yes.
Have they con-?
Yes.
So it's provider-specific?
Correct.
Okay, so provider-specific to, yeah, if they have-
Correct. So that's anybody can use this?
Yes.
This thing that you put up, and it's, anybody can access and put, and send it?
We're the transport company, just like ITC transports both for consumers' energy and DTE. They don't specify which one, or thumb, I think there's a thumb electrical, or, there's other different electric companies that use ITC to transport. We're the same way, we transport. So anyone who contracts with us can use it to transport.
Which would be the, the various carriers?
Exactly.
B, T, and T.
Carriers, or, or your fire department could, or a water department that needs to use it for smart meters. Because that's all data, too. Uh, we have one jurisdiction in the state that has asked if they can contract with us for their water meters, because they're installing smart meters. You need to transport the data. And once you put the meters in there, you've gotta find some way to receive the information. So there's a lot of, we have banks or customers, so there's a lot of different uses for it.
So if my carrier is coupled with your company, then I'm gonna have access to that tower in this town?
Correct.
And if I'm not, then I don't, I'm on my own with whatever order plan I have.
Which your company may decide to go with us.
So just try to get understanding.
Right, yes, exactly. And so the more these get around the country, the more access the different carriers will have to put their antenna on it.
Who is your current company?
The, the current one is Sprint.
And, so, the, your, the equipment that goes on the tower is put on there by your customer?
Um, we actually do all of the installation for them.
Okay.
It's hard, we have a, we hire a contractor that does all the installation.
And that particular dish is, I remember Sprint, when it was called Nextel. Was leasing a Verizon dish on that tower on Kane's property.
So if you have, does that mean you'd have many dishes, or, not, because I don't understand how that, how that equipment works? Is it like you have one dish, and that would be for one customer? Or many customers use that same dish?
I believe with the dishes, they can all use the same one. But the antenna at the top, that's just one carrier. But all they need is the one antenna at the top. I think it's about a two-foot, depends on the brand of the antenna, it might be 18 inches, might be 24. And then the dish will just transport it. But the antenna itself is what picks it up from your iPhone, your, you know, iPad, your computer, wherever the signal's coming from, and it might, it might be your TV. You know, they have the smart TVs now, and all of that's coming into it, too. So, um, that will pick it up, the antenna at the top, and then it transports it down to the dish. The dishes today are pretty cool. It's not like the old dish where you had the round dish, and it had to be pinpoint exact to the next round dish. Now, it grabs any signal that's within a few feet of it. And, you know, sends it out, kind of a buckshot spread.
Frequency frequency issue there.
Yeah, so it's, it's much better. That way, you don't need as heavy-duty. If it sways in the wind a little bit, it's okay. You know, they're designed to do that, to sway a little bit in the wind.
I wonder if you can give us some insight as to why you chose the city of Memphis, and maybe why you chose the location where it's at?
Actually, our client chose it because they don't have good enough quality service here. Uh, they said they wanna provide a better service here, and we're doing a lot, you know. I was just in Sandish last night, and we put one there. Because, you know, the further north you go, typically, the poorer the quality service you have.
Your client being?
Our client is Sprint on this one.
Sprint, okay.
So you're, so, and this is, you men, you mentioned this, I just wanna be sure that I understand that, that, so that main antenna, that's gonna be Sprint, if you're a Verizon customer, this is not gonna benefit you?
Well, we also have Verizon as a client, we're starting to do some work for them. So, you know-
Does that mean you have two towers?
It's towers.
Or do you, does it all go, is it all together?
We can put a second antenna right up on top, it's an Omni antenna. And they can go one on top of the other, it'll be like another two-foot on, on top.
This is what happened to us. Remember when the city bought Nextels, uh, once that tower was put up on Kane's property, and everything was hunky-dory? Then they decided not to pay for that, the use of Verizon's, uh, tower. And we were all left with useless phones.
Yeah, you had change.
We all, we had change to Verizon.
Well, part of the problem-
So you just promised us, promised, and what it comes down to, hey, I don't want that anymore, I'm gonna shut her down. That's pretty much what they done to us.
Well, what, typically, what's going on now, though, is there is so much usage. And because everyone's giving up their landline phone, I mean, it's pretty rare when someone says, oh yeah, I have a hot phone. Really? You know? Um, so they, they, they need more and more service. So, the odds?
My point was, they had, they had one right here. And they, they dropped it.
Yeah. I have to say, I've been doing this for 23 years, and I think I've seen two towers removed in, in the cellular industry.
Yeah, just wasn't removed, they just, to my understanding, they were just leasing it. They re-upped it, I don't know, maybe the technology of the phones.
Well, actually-
We didn't pay the big money for smartphones for our employees.
I believe what happened is when Nextel and Sprint merged.
Yeah.
They had completely different types of technology, and it really wasn't smart to merge the two, because they couldn't merge them. You had to either keep both running.
Yeah.
Or, or give up one. And they, they gave up Nextels, because Nextel was more like a, a two-way walkie-talkie.
Yes.
And whereas Sprint's a phone. And they could see that the future was in the phones.
So those contractors just kinda got kicked.
Yeah.
So how about that location, was it just picked at random out of a hat, or was it some logic to where?
No. Yeah, there is logic to it. They look at where the, the most calls are, most data is being used. Um, it could be because, sometimes it's because it's next to a school. Sometimes it's near a hospital, sometime, you know, it just depends where their data usage is. Every time, every city I go into, because I cover half of the state, so I don't always know exactly what's in your town as to why that's a hotspot. Or maybe it's just because they felt they could cover the whole city from there.
They, yeah.
Yeah, it's right in the middle of town.
Right, so they're probably trying to cover the entire city from more. Because if they put it, say, on the north side, people on the south side wouldn't get much.
Yeah, it only stood about four feet off to what about busiest, needed to.
They have to buy that close to the town? I mean, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, though, when you just said that, that the people in the south were a square mile.
Yeah.
How far, how much, how much gender, I mean, how?
Well, it could be they're trying to cover also your surrounding area, not just Memphis.
What is the coverage area of a tower?
Yeah, what's the coverage?
Um, it depends on the usage more than the coverage. Uh, because you have a small town and less usage, I would guess it's probably three miles, maybe five at the most, if there's a really small amount of usage. But, you know, if there's high usage, say in Detroit, we might need them every, you know, 500 feet.
Oh, the towers?
Yeah. And there, we're putting, you know, 75-foot wood poles in, in Detroit, because you need them so often. So, you know, we're trying to cover, the taller it is, the more you cover.
Now, can something like this be like attached to a building or an existing tower, without having to?
Um, couple problems there. One, you don't have any tall enough buildings. Um, the buildings are pretty short here.
Water tower. Water tower is the tallest structure in the area.
Right. Um, we are trying-
How tall is that, Bart, by the way? 135 feet. Yeah, I thought it was about 140.
But we are trying to center it right where the, the, the coverage will be the maximum. And we are building out an entire transport system, so it's, that way we can use it for, for others.
The problem is, and I think Bart can explain it, I guess, but right where you're going to put it, and would you mind?
You go right ahead, Larry.
I can go ahead?
Yeah.
Right where you're gonna put it, there's an eight-inch water main, there's a gas line, and there's also catch basins with drainage that go for-
Stormwater.
Stormwater. So, it's really not feasible to put it in that spot. Now, there's, I'm sure in the city, there is places where it might go, but that is a bad spot, because it's all of that there. And I'm, and I'm sure there's, there's private property that could probably go on, too. But, uh, that is a very bad spot.
Well, what I'm thinking is maybe we could take a look at the utilities, see how wide your right-of-way is there, and put it so that it misses it. At 32 feet, we could probably-
Well, they either have to work on that water main or that storm drain, the gas isn't mine, but the gas people come in and they've gotta trench that.
Right.
Now, we're gonna have to have a crane to support this tower.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we don't, we don't wanna, you know, interfere with utilities. So what we, right, so what I'd like to do is get the concept approved, and we work together on a location. Uh, we might, you know, move it back, you know, 15 feet off the, the road, edge of road. Because every, every jurisdiction I go into is different. Sometimes they say, okay, you know, edge of curb, go back 15 feet, because we've got 20 feet.
Yeah.
Great, that's what we do, and we stay away from the gas, the water line, sewer line, et cetera. And so we try to work with you and work that out.
So the benefit to the city is basically better coverage?
Much better coverage, yes.
Yeah.
What's the lifespan of one of these poles?
Uh, the pole itself? Um, I, I've seen some that are, you know, 50 years. Some of the old-style ones. But, uh, that pole, it's, it's the exact same design as the highway designs. The, uh, it's Ashley design. Uh, and it's the same manufacturer that designs highway poles. So it's gonna last as long as the highway poles do.
Well, it's a concrete foundation, right?
Correct.
How deep is the foundation? I couldn't see anything outside how deep it does go.
It's based on the soil conditions, we do have to drill, once we know the exact location, we'll drill for the soil conditions. It could be anywhere from 18 to 25 feet. You know, depending on soil, if we get sand, or we get clay, or-
How deep's the aquifer?
You'll get clay. What do you think, Bert?
There's an aquifer actually in our town.
Is there?
Yeah.
I, I just think that that spot is not, I just don't think that spot's feasible at all.
Yeah, you got a private parking lot there, and 15 feet away, you've got some busy streets, so.
Would you be interested, are you, are they interested in, uh, private property?
No, we're interested in going in the right-of-way.
Okay. Because of private property, you'd have to pay a royalty, some, some sort of share.
Right.
Well, I, the only solution, if we, I don't think it can go there. If you're willing to, I wanted to have a meeting with the mayor and Bart, or, or somebody like that, and look at other locations, uh, that might be possible, but I just don't think it can go there.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, and take a look and see where, what the width is of that road, maybe the next, you know, street over, uh, what the width is there. And, and find out, you know, how much right-of-way you have versus how much utility is in the road.
Much, street over is a side street.
Okay, or, or cross streets.
Or you get more, into more residential, something should happen to this pole.
Yeah.
That's what we saw.
Right, that's why, that's probably one of the reasons they looked at that location also, because I, I did Google Earth, and it looked like that was an industrial building.
Yeah.
So that makes sense.
Over right across the street is residential halls in here. And my concern is, I'm closest, is to that rather busy road, and school buses traveling down twice a day. Right. That, you know, potential for collision, you're not gonna be able to get more than eight or 10 feet off the road there, before you're into private property. Right. So, that just doesn't leave enough clearance from the road for that.
So we're, we're not very big, we're 1,200 people with a mile square. And, uh, so, you know, just like, like Richmond is much bigger.
Right.
They got about 6,000 people, they're five times greater than we are. And, uh, I don't know what their square, what their mileage is.
Not greater, but just bigger.
All right. I only combo Richmond. So-
Yeah, we would be willing to look at alternate locations and the right-of-way with you, to see what fits best with the utilities.
I don't, in this community here, I really don't think we have that much, right where I am in the road, that puts some 120 feet up in the sky. Would it, would, I don't know, just throw some, oh, other city property, I don't know, if we have other city property, or something like that, but that's, how much we have, it's a little bit of that.
First, I mean, even on Main Street, and, and, on Barton Road, there's still a lot of houses.
Well, I don't see it, yeah, I don't see it going on Main Street or Barton, I just don't see it happening.
And then, and if you go to the side streets, it's all residential. And I'm, I'm sure you couldn't put a resident, you know, you shouldn't put it there. So I'm, I'm just, I don't know if it's feasible.
Yeah, you're right, actually, even more limited, on the right-of-way zone. The local city. Obviously, you don't want anywhere near the wire car, right, Bert? No, I rather don't.
Now, Bart, are you, on the water board also?
And license the water operator and sewer operator.
Well, maybe we can do that, get together with, uh, Mr. Stoops and Mr. Schneider, and take a look at, you know, alternate locations.
I don't, I don't really see an alternate location for this.
I mean, the base of it is not 120 foot, obviously, that's, you know-
No, no, that's the height of it.
Just a little over two foot. So... Yeah, we have, we have two different types of design. One with the equipment inside of the base, that's about three, a little over three foot. And then we have one that's two-foot, I think it's a little, just over two.
Yeah, this one, on the principle of 40-inch, the two-by-one.
Yeah, this one, and then there's also a smaller version, too.
Would that be two or three feet running straight down?
Correct.
With a pad or with a column, or is the support not gonna need to be eight feet wide?
No, 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 no.
That would continue all the way down.
That goes straight down, and we have no equipment cabinets next to it. Equipment is hung on the pole, or equipment's there, or it's in the base. And that's up high enough so that kids can't tamper with it.
How many antennas can you put on one pole?
I believe it's three. Yeah. So that would be for three companies that need it, whether they're carriers, or banks, or yourselves, whoever, whoever needs it.
Is this also like any type of camera, type of, um, technology that goes on there?
Uh, there isn't, but I mean, if, if, say, the county or, or city wanted a camera on it, we could make that kind of an arrangement. Because I know counties oftentimes have cameras on there, traffic cameras.
That's a little big.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you may not have that kind of problem with traffic.
So you'd be happy if we just agreed to the concept, contingent on an agreeable site being found?
Yes.
And we're not being involved in anything, just to have you maybe explore it a little bit further?
Right, I, let me be honest with you. You know how they always talk about those kids that are in their parents' basement, or playing on the computer? I think the people who pick out all these spots are just like them. They're, you know, they don't think about people, they don't think about what's around them. They think about what's best for the system, and, oh, that's it. They don't think about, well, what utility's under it, how does that affect the people around it? That's my job. So then I come out and I say, you know, especially when they put it from the mayor's house.
Larry.
I said, okay, that's not gonna work.
You're up in the hill there, yeah?
I am, yeah. You guys bought a tower, great. Did you gain a few extra feet on that one?
Absolutely, so, yes, and then I'll work with you to, to find, you know, what's best. If, you know, I don't know, you said it's a square mile, but it might be only a few blocks to just on the edge, maybe we can, you know, if there's a farm there or something, maybe we can put it in the right-of-way right there. You know, I, to be honest, I didn't even know Memphis existed, you know, a couple weeks ago.
Correct, there's a lot of those.
I, I was talking to-
There's not politicians in those, you know, anything.
I was talking to someone on the way here, and I said, I'm, I'm driving to Memphis, and she says, you're driving all the way to Memphis? I said, yeah, Memphis Mission.
You gotta qualify.
It felt like it.
You see all the next.
If I find out this year, though. Yeah, so a concept approval would be great, and I'll work with you to figure out exactly where the best location is.
Would it be an area like, uh?
We'd have to, we'd have to get together, so.
Yeah, you'd have to, because I, I just-
Maybe do the map, and what, and stuff, actually, we'd have to look at.
Right, because I just know, this would, this is, there's too much infrastructure.
We have, is there stuff in our zoning?
Is there stuff in our zoning?
There is a zoning ordinance about antenna towers.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I thought there was, like, I don't remember specifically.
And it has to do with the fall distance or something like that, right, Bert?
Yeah, so we'd have to look and see how all that applied, where it went relative to residential locations and all that kind of stuff, so.
I mean, that was written before cellphone towers, so it's, that's not what was really written before, but I'm assuming it covers that.
Standard TV tower.
Right, and typically the old TV towers, FM radio towers, they were huge and they needed a lot of guy wires. These obviously don't need guy wires anymore. They're just like the pole that's, you know, the county puts at the corner of Main Street in most cities.
Well, I don't think, first, I don't think there's any way we can approve this tonight, obviously. So, yeah, the best we could offer would be to see if the city would be willing to put an exploratory committee together to see if there's any other possible location.
That will work for me. Just as long as we have a catch pole.
See if they wanted to go that far or not.
Did you have like a site engineer come out here physically or is that?
Well, either I could come out and look at the maps with you or I could ask our construction manager. He's in Chicago, but he comes here at least once or twice a week.
I just, I just really have a hard time coming. I've been here my whole life, so I know pretty much every square inch of this city and I just can't think of a real spot where you can put it.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and the right-of-ways were certain.
But oftentimes, we look at things with a different eye and all of a sudden, we see something that we know will work. And you say, well, I never thought of that one. You know, so sometimes if we work together with you, we can find the right spot.
Do you ever put them in wetlands?
No, because the EQ wouldn't allow it. I've tried. Maybe under the new administration. No, I don't see them having the wetlands. I mean, there's always dry spots though, next to a wetland.
I think you stand a better chance of getting this stuff on private property than with that right-of-way this time.
Oh, you definitely have a better chance of private property. And in these areas, you could, Lions got a lot of area down there. But I don't think you can do it for nothing.
Well, no.
Maybe we could look at the right-of-way right next to a park. Or the Lions.
I definitely would want next to parks.
Or next to the Lions property.
Yeah, it's on a side street.
It's on the side street now. Two thousand feet, maybe from this one.
Or maybe just beyond our City Levens and Rileytown chip or South Richmond chip.
Well, yeah, because you don't.
Just the right, yeah, just right.
You go a half mile and you're in other township. In Richmond, you go up Bourbon and Riley, if you go on M nineteen, which is only a half mile. And there's lots of vacant land there. I mean, even, because you want it on the right-of-way and it'd be awful close to the road there in both areas.
And there's all the time, you get the M nineteen, things that we state would get involved.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That would be an issue.
That'd be an issue, yeah. Well, then the decision, I guess, is either we do nothing or we could explore another possibility, another area, which seems kind of doubtful.
I don't see what there is for the planning permission to do with this.
I just hate wasting anybody's time, really. I hate to waste anybody's time.
Well, that's it, because I just don't, I just don't, we're so small. It's just not a.
Well, how about if you table it? And what we do is I take it back and have our engineers look if there's any possibility that they can do it from half a mile away. And if that would work, if it would still provide enough coverage for the town?
We could table a review later, I guess I wouldn't be against that. If Bert wanted to come up with that offer of a location, we could do that.
That would seem logical, you know, my people work something out. Actually, can't really answer the question. I would love to see you make a motion to deny this proposal and then move forward from there.
Yeah, because this one can't work. And I'll just say that right now, this can't work.
I make a motion to deny this proposal.
And I'll support it.
I have a motion to support the denied proposal that's presented. All those affairs.
Aye.
opposed? Motion period.
Okay, then, then it depends whether you want to.
So I guess if you can come up with a location that you think is more suitable, might work for us and be better than, by all means, feel free to resubmit.
We'll do that.
We'll review that one as well.
So you're looking for business cards in there? Anyone else need that card?
Well, you have my number.
Yes, I have your phone number.
I'm here, I'll meet with anybody that you want to meet with and.
Okay, and we'll take a look at alternate locations and propose a couple. And we'll see what, you know, how you feel about the different locations and.
Hey, it would be nice, you know, it could be a way forward.
And you know what, we broke the ice with you, you now know what it is, you now understand how it can help you, so I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
There was one question, I know you had mentioned Wi-Fi earlier.
Yes.
So this would be like a local Wi-Fi provider that would contract with you?
Well, Sprint provides Wi-Fi. So they do provide that. So, you know, depending on what your needs are, not everyone uses a cellphone anymore and a lot of people talk through their computer.
Have an iPad or whatever it is.
And then would that be like an Xfinity would also be like a customer of yours? Or are they going to be?
No, they're cable.
They have their own system.
Okay, right. AT&amp;T is wireless. So it would be similar to that, but Sprint also could do the same thing that AT&amp;T is doing. Offering TV and voice, you know, voice for your computer.
I just didn't realize that they offered Wi-Fi.
Yeah, it's just amazing, all the things that are being offered. I'm in the industry and I don't know half of it. So it always kind of surprises me. I keep thinking, one day when I retire, I can look into all of this.
Well, I'm old enough, I remember buggies, so.
You remember typing on that typewriter.
Their first communication mode was the tin can and two strings, you know.
That was high-tech, aren't they, Bob?
When we were kids, we used to.
I remember those, the candle soup cans.
Campbell's soup had a good.
Both one didn't work very well, you had to get some actual.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I used to operate a trailer from the railroad and I'd pass messages up to a train with, they're going by with a bamboo hoop and a message in there. So that's a whole night.
More telegraph.
No, we, well, no, we had telegraph.
That was high-tech.
Yeah, telegraph, that was high-tech, that was telegraph.
Thanks for coming out and do take time and drive safe.
I appreciate your presentation.
I will take my time home.
Thank you.
Very much.
Be careful driving home, please.
I guess there's no further new business then? We've kind of beat that horse to death at this point? Any other new business? Any comments from the commissioners, Larry?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I guess I have nothing.
No, I have.
Nothing, just Merry Christmas to everybody.
Oh, yes, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Bart?
There was one, I'll never.
He's just acting up again.
I'm making my turn.
I have a motion to support to adjourn, all those there?
Aye.
opposed? Motion period.